Lift all the air we come together to again do the work of the city and to do the work that would be able to enhance all that our concern. We thank you for the opportunity and we thank you for this great nation. These things we ask and send Jesus may to be with us this evening. Amen.
I put the leadings to reply of the United States of America and to the Republic for this trans one nation under God, individual, and liberty, without a scar off.
Good evening. This is February 15th. It's at six o'clock and this is a workshop, a financial workshop and we have our accountant in the house. Well, this he take the role of call zone one, zone two, present, zone three, and zone four. And I'm here. We also have present our new city administrator, Mr. Jim Leeson, the former city administrator on the way out.
Old city man.
The after and our city clerk Roxanne. One more name. Okay, so that's what happens agenda. All right. So yeah, this workshop was called, I think, you know, discussing a handful of items, one which was a monthly. Your report would look like in terms of the actual activity year to date budget otherwise variance or support being what was thrown around. So the objective, one of the objectives will be to say, hey, what, what do we want to see in a report? And what would that look like frequency kind of the nail down? What are the parameters? Because good news is with the, the system that we're in, the data is all there. So it's just a matter of saying, hey, what frequency, what level of detail do we want to pull that? So we will touch on that as there was an hour scheduled kind of thinking about discussing with the old and new administrators and what to touch on. Thought it'd be useful to take that time and say, let's kind of set the groundwork first, just kind of do a quick review of the, the budget process, statistics, and other factors that kind of come into play to that. I figured it would be a good, just kind of web of settings, sets of the framework as we get into any discussions beyond that. And then as well, assuming that we have time, which I think we will have an hour, a couple of things as we look ahead to already the fiscal year 2025. Budget kind of seems crazy to be talking about 25, but we are really in June. So about four months away from talking about, hey, we're having a budget workshop to discuss. Next year's budget, look at some of those projections. So a couple of thoughts on that as well was kind of the general overview that I had been looking at and discussed with, you know, these guys in terms of plans for that. So if that sounds good, I can kind of jump in from the starting point. Let's say if there's questions as I go, please interrupt me because we probably will hit a handful of different things as I hit something. There might be kind of just questions or clarifications or otherwise on any of those topics. I'm thinking just to keep us all on track. Interrupting is probably going to be better versus saying, hey, what we talked about five or 10 minutes ago. So just to acknowledge that, please do feel free to interrupt me. So just to review the budget process, of course, we use the process every year. I have public hearings in September to adopt a budget before the end of the current fiscal year. That goes into effect for the following fiscal year. From a monitoring or statutory concept, there's kind of two ways that I look at the budget in terms of, you know, and we're in the role of auditor, which is kind of what's more prominent as well as here is you have your, your budgetary compliance side of the house, which is kind of your statutory, did we as a city follow the letter of the law? Are we in compliance with all applicable statutes as it relates to the budget process? Both in terms of what we spent kind of reflecting on the year once the year is complete and we say, hey, what was our final fund activity in terms of what we spent? What was in the budget? Were we in compliance as well as on the front end of course, which is when we go through those public hearings and the budget workshop process, there's a handful of steps in that process where data is reported to the Department of Revenue for, you know, preliminary military, all of the advertisements, a trim package goes to the state to basically validate what that budget process was from start to finish and kind of demonstrate that the city complied with that process from start to finish. So I'm not going to talk too much about the process. We've kind of done that. I think there's, you have a system there to make sure all those steps are hit. If there's any questions on what that process looks like, why we go through the different steps, we can certainly touch on that. I'm going to kind of focus more on the backend and evaluation of everything. We look at the evaluation again, really kind of two key sides that differentiate the budget process. Number one, again, you've got your, your compliance side of the house and then you've got your kind of management side of the house because the budget. In anywhere but government is kind of just primarily a management tool. And you set a budget and say, here's what we expect. And then you evaluate, you know, for better or for worse, how you live against the budget. That certainly is part of the role here. And that's kind of, I think, where most of this discussion will go in terms of what we want to make that evaluation or management process look like. From the legal side, just to quickly touch on that, Florida statutes effectively require that each fund that we have has a legally adopted budget. So we adopt a budget for the general fund, stormwater fund, utility fund, the impact fee funds. And that budget provides for a baseline, basically total level of expenditures. So the way that it works from the state's perspective or really by statute is as a, as a baseline, a local government municipality is constrained to say that you have to legally stay within your total budget at the fund level to be in compliance with state statutes. So effectively, in that case of your general fund, if you've got $3 million in your budget and across the entire fund spent 2.9 million, that would be legally in compliance regardless of where those funds were spent within that budget. That's kind of like in the baseline, what the statutes say, if you have nothing else that's different or more restrictive. Then what you can kind of get into is like terms, you know, more locally restricted. That would be done generally, you know, through charter that there's, you know, there's some municipalities that there is language in the charter that basically says, hey, we are going to, you know, restrict the budget process where the legal level of control is at the department level or otherwise. And that kind of is outlined in that capacity to again, have a legal governing document for the entity that says that, hey, this is the legal level of control. It's at the department level or it could be at the account level, the function level. There's, there could really be anything, but ultimately the, the city or the electorate has the ability to be more restrictive in terms of what are those governing laws in place relative to the municipality's budget. The city of Lakeview, there's nothing else out there. So it is one where, you know, in terms of the way the audits presented, the way the auditors assess it, because they do look and say, hey, are there any compliance issues? That is at the fund level. So just to kind of highlight that from a, a where we are, you know, how it's sometimes looked at and where, you know, we kind of then transition into the management side of the discussion, which is I think, you know, where a lot of the questions maybe at times have come from in terms of saying, well, hey, where was this spent? Where was it in the budget? How is it assessed? Because in theory, again, you know, at the fund level, you could have one department over budget, one department under budget. But if in total the fund is under budget, that would effectively be in compliance from a statute perspective. So again, that shifts the focus back to, okay, what's the desire from a management perspective to say, hey, what do we want to do aside from just saying, yeah, we comply with statutes? What do we want our internal process and oversight to look like in terms of watching that in more detail level or otherwise? So they just want to kind of give that breakdown and say, hey, here's, you know, where we currently follow, how to fly and how that ties into the, hey, are we in compliance? When we get the audit and, you know, we'll touch on that of course in the six o'clock, but if there's no compliance findings or otherwise from the auditor, that is kind of what they look at. Did we follow the process on the front end? And then are all of our funds in compliance with their budget at the end of the year? So that's kind of what it looks like again from a, at the end day evaluation perspective. To talk through, first kind of just kind of talk through the amendment process in terms of, you know, how things change over the course of the year. And then we'll get into kind of the management side of things and talk about reports, what would be useful to help oversee that. I guess any questions at this point? We'll do a quick break. If anyone's got anything, they're good to carry on. I'm sure you guys don't want to listen to me talk for an hour straight.
Yeah, I know you usually work with a power, what do you call it? Screen points? Power. Do you have that, do you have that as a power point that you can send to us?
So we have the audit kind of year end review. This is more just kind of discussion. So nothing in kind of that format. We could certainly put it together. It's kind of a, you know, providing the flip notes summary after the fact here, some of the key.
This is a lot of paper. If you send it to me on my email, I could put it through on my screen.
You know, there is, I create paper, paperwork that kind of summarizes. But no, there's no document of, oh, here's everything I'm telling you. It's more just.
No problem.
Kind of discussion.
The power company we've got there, Roger, is going to go along with the, the audit.
Yeah.
And his sort of summary view.
Yeah, the audit. Yeah, that's, that would be the audit.
Yeah, certainly I've passed that, which is the hard copy of the audit. Again, I think those were in the agenda packets as well, in case anyone wanted a pretty found copy. All right. So from a budget amendment process, again, anything kind of from a starting point, any budget amendments to the way it's kind of described in statute is to increase appropriation. So if the total budget is, we're going to spend $3 million and we're going to increase that to say, hey, we're not going to spend $3.2 million in the general fund. That would have to be approved by resolution, effectively the same process in which the budget itself is approved. If there was anything in the city charter that said, hey, we are going to have the budgetary level of control to say each department has to spend within their approved budget, typically what you don't see is there may be discretion to say that within a department, maybe your, your staff could move within. But to, to change total budget for a department, something like that would require commission approval. Again, there's nothing outlining any of that, but from a statute perspective reverting back there, effectively what it's been is any amendments to the budget, whether it's increasing total expenses, changing from one line item to another or otherwise, if the budget itself is to be amended, that would have to be approved by the city commission again by resolution. We've had a couple of those over the years. We did have one on the, I think it was the November agenda for fiscal year 23, kind of year end saying that primarily focused on the hurricane activity. It was more than the original fiscal year 23 budget related to hurricanes Ian and Nicole, because most of that debris work fell at the start of the last fiscal year. So that is the, the only amendment that was done to the budget fiscal year 23 to basically say that the ending budget was what we adopted in September of '22 plus that, that year end budget amendment. Just kind of initial perspective fiscal year '22, we had no budget amendments. Same for fiscal year '20 and then fiscal year '21 did have one budget amendment which covered really two items. There were some additional grant funding, I think on the Virginia Drive project. And that also was the year that we moved the impact fee funds into separate funds. Those were previously buried in the, in the general fund. So there was a budget amendment to effectively approve the transfer of those impact fees out of the general fund into their own fund. So yeah, just kind of hit the, the legal side of things of, okay, what does the budget amendment process look like? Relating that back to compliance, you know, there could be cases where, you know, one example I give in terms of we say the, the level of control is at the fund level or even toward the department level is let's say we've got a $10,000 line item for a part-time parks and rec assistant that comes out for events, something like that. And there's an individual assigned and you have them on kind of the projected payroll, but then they end up can't do it, whatever the case might be. And the city hires a contractor. What we would have there, let's say equal announced pay, instead of paying $10,000 to an employee through W2 wages, we've now paid through just a regular check, $10,000 to a contractor. So within the budget, the parks and rec line items, if that was all we had, we'd have your payroll line with a $10,000 budget and zero in expenses for payroll. And then the contract services, you know, call it for a third party company, might've had a zero budget, but $10,000 was effectively spent at the end of the day. So at that point, again, the way it kind of rolls up is looking at that in total to say, hey, something's changed. But in total, are we within the legal level of control and compliance to say, hey, we are under budget in total? Even though some items may have gone over, some items may have gone under, it becomes a matter of looking at it in the aggregate. So again, that is the kind of legal compliance side of things. I know, I think where there's been questions over time is, you know, spending that is maybe different from the budget and then in terms of, you know, what communication has there been or otherwise to say that, hey, this was the plan, you know, kind of the guess that we had in August, September, before the fiscal year started. But, you know, nine, 10 months later, things were different. The following summer did not go exactly according to plan. So there was effectively kind of pivoting in the amounts within departments or otherwise, but new additional amounts spent in total. So I think what the, the goal of a bunch of this is going to be is to kind of talk about what, what could a report look like, you know, ultimately what, does the commission want to see that will help, you know, just in having an appropriate comfort level to say, hey, what, what has the city spent? How are things are going? What has to be changed from expectations or otherwise? Because I know for the period I've been around, which is, I think, nine years, four years as the auditor, it's now five years on the internal side of the house. And I think for that entire time, kind of the, the fall report has been the bills paid report that goes in the commission packet every month. Basically just listing out a granular detail. Here's all of the checks that were cut to which vendor and in what amount. And I think also for which account was a charge from the accounting perspective. So that's kind of been the, what has been done. At the end of the day, what is done is ultimately wanting to say, hey, what does the commission want to see? What level of, you know, what level of detail, frequency and otherwise? Because it's one of those where there's a million different ways to skin a cat. The good news, as I mentioned, is the accounting system very maneuverable. There are some pre-built reports. There's the ability to very easily have additional reports built that will provide again, the information in the format desired in the frequency and the level of detail. Because again, as I said, there's lots of different ways to do it. So really the focus, I think, on this discussion again, to come to what level of detail would be most impactful? Is it a high level? Is it every account? Is that the department level? You know, probably the most common baseline would be something to say, maybe on a monthly basis, we've got, here's what we've spent either by department summarized there or at the detailed level to kind of say, hey, then, you know, the police department, we've got these 25 different line items from payroll, supplies, things like that. And kind of see that granular, well, hey, salaries was under budget, contract services was over budget or whatever else. Typically what you probably see is looking at what have we spent year to date? What was in the budget? Are we over or under a total? And then we have a percentage figure, which I believe is on what Jim had just passed out. It's kind of a rough idea of what something might look like to say, hey, you know, it's the end of March and we've spent 15% of what was in the budget. We're basically pacing exactly. You know, there'll be some line items where it might be 100% because something is a once a year event or otherwise shows up right away or it's lower, but just again, because of the timing. They would give those details, see those percentages and have the ability to kind of see and understand those timing differences when they exist. So again, that is kind of the, the high level, a few different ideas. But I would, you know, ultimately probably, you know, turn it over to you all for any kind of thoughts in terms of what do you want to see, what would look like, what level of detail? Because again, we want to make it as meaningful as possible, you know, where it's not, not enough information, but it's not information overload that you kind of don't know where to start. So with that all, open the energy back to thoughts.
I got it. Thank you, Sam. I appreciate all, I appreciate all that information. I understand that we set our budget and ultimately let's say the goal is to stay within $9 million. And states' statute says as long as we don't go over that, we stay within that amount of money, we're okay. That's what we've got to prove. When we have our workshops, however, we break everything down like salaries for all of the employees over time. So we're doing it departmentally. We're doing different lines, but somewhere in the middle of the year, we may be under budget on a line item. And then monies can be moved over. And I give, you know, let's say you need to take money out of a general fund to move over to salaries. Or you take money out of the water revenues and that's been moved over, let's say into salaries. My problem is, is that how can anybody in a business maintain the amounts of money spent for each department? So that's the reason I wanted this workshop. You and I have met before. We've discussed it. I don't think that it's harder to go ahead and have a budget that can be presented monthly and show the variance, whether we're over or under. I think that would help any administrator, any commissioner stay on track of where the dollars are going. And certainly I think that if any of our citizens, and I know many that do, watch it, they're wondering where's the money coming from? And who approved it and which account did it come out of? And I think that's my goal as a commissioner. And to keep our citizens on top of, this is where the, the dollars are going. If we're under budget on postage after, you know, that somebody might complain about postage, well, that's easily explainable. And you can take monies out of the general fund and move that over. But I do think that at some point, I don't know at what level, which person, I haven't seen the commission in a year and a half approve any monies to be moved from one line to another. So to answer your question on where is it that we're wanting to go, I don't know where the rest of the commission wants to go. I want something that's easy, something that is usually best practices. And typically in government, and I'm a little familiar with it, we get some details that goes along with budget lines as monies are being spent. So am I making myself clear on what I'm kind of looking at for a budget?
I think some, just again, understanding kind of level of detail, you want to have a department level, account level detail in terms of, again, what, what that report would look like. And I don't know if we have a copy of the one that you had passed out to say, hey, is that it?
Yeah. And I think that is absolutely what I'm looking for.
Okay.
I think we can all understand it. Of course, it's going to be up to the commission to decide votes for this. But it's simple. We know where it's going. If monies have to be moved over, the commissioners should be made aware that monies are coming from one account, being moved to another account. So we can explain it to our constituents. Because I hate saying, I don't know.
Well, Commissioner, what I handed out to you, just a sample of my last one that I gave in Littleton, because they're on January to December. So it just happened to flow in. And this report mirrors the budget, what you said, the line items. And now there's different departments, so it would be a shorter report, but there's no reason why that shouldn't be there. But I can tell you this, and I, you know, leading to speak on that account, no one has any authority to move money from one department to another department. That's the commission. Nobody has any authority to move it out of one line item to another line item. Postage is short because the post office did an increase and we didn't budget for it. And that line item will show over for the year. I'm not going to pull money out of somewhere else to, to fill that because you need to see the reality that they say, hey, post office raised a two cents on us and we didn't count for it. So next year, when we do the budget, we'll correct that. There was one thing on the report that I gave you. It's called streetlights. It's kind of as the electrical fee for town of Littleton that we paid for the streetlight system. And I budgeted a 37% increase and it turned out to be a 15% increase. So every month, the council saw that line item and we said, we know we're going to be over and we'll correct it next year. Cause we got the power company, they said, there's going to be no increase. So then we could budget the next year based on those numbers. So I, I hear what you're saying and I've, everywhere I've worked, I've done this on a monthly basis and it helps at budget work time because you're familiar with what's happened going along. So what we sent to you with a, with a line item saying, we need to, we missed this one.
And that's going to happen, but at least the commissioners will be made aware.
And like you missed one here, you'll see in some of those funds, you'll see a negative number. But then when you look at very bottom, you see that the department itself was under budget. So we might've missed a postage or an electrical or, you know, or you had an emergency and you had to replace a laptop or something that didn't expect to. But, but you know, but it would show you. And I think so. It's not, you're not asking for anything that isn't normal practice.
Not normal practice and best practices, by the way. I work with the same kind of budget for many years. And this is basically nothing difficult. Everybody can understand that the commissioners are aware of where monies are being moved, where we're short. We may have to wait till the end of the budget year to, you know, correct everything. But right now, we don't know, at least I don't, I'm not getting any information on where are we short? Are we moving monies from waters to salaries or, you know, general funds from one line?
If we're doing that, that's illegal because the water fund is a standalone business fund and that cannot be co名with your taxes or vice versa. So I mean, but I know what you're saying, but you're not getting a report just in the sense of, if, if the line was off, then we don't need to fix it. We need to show you that so that when we do the next budget, then we adjust, address it there. It's not like I'm trying to move money around. So there's a negative on one line and go, well, let's take $10 here and move it here. So it looks like everything's on track. No, you, the numbers are what they are. And you just report them actual what's there. And if there was something serious came up in the year and you had to do a budget amendment, as he said, in reference to take some money out of reserve because of hurricane damage and that $230,000 didn't cover. Then you make a motion and we do a budget amendment to fix the, that budget. But we don't need to do that because the line item is over.
No.
Yeah. Cause as long as the partner is under budget or on budget, then we'll just work on those line items in the next budget.
You're sure that not all line items are going to be over.
Yes.
Just work on the problem, you know, that's at hand.
Zach, when you prepare our budget, I'm sure you, I'm asking a question. That you prepare for a proactive approach to the budget, that things could happen and you kind of position things that could be, uh, whatever your budget is for, let's say, if you use last year's budget and you use it on a, one of the last three years of this. And then so when you set this budget, there's been increases over last year. So you step it up to try to accommodate or reduce it. If there's something to show that there's less money being used in a particular side of the, the budget, how do you manage that? How is it, how does it work for you that we are at a place where you are right, where we are right now? Were there some mistakes that you've made or some corrections that you'd like to make?
Yeah, I think it all. So no major, you know, mistakes. I mean, the biggest thing is kind of the, I mean, the biggest thing is kind of, a lot of it is in estimates. On the revenues, for instance, you know, we have property tax, you pretty much know that numbers. We take, you know, a 4% discount. You kind of assume everyone's going to pay early. You might get some non-payments in the year, some that did not pay early. So that usually comes out pretty close. You know, on the revenue side, you know, because that's where it's more of a guess. The state puts out estimates for all of our state distributions, like sales tax, communication service tax, revenue sharing. So there we just basically go with, you know, more or less verbatim what the state puts out there. There are others, like the franchise fees from Duke, you know, will usually say, hey, we are projecting a, you know, 5% estimate, 5% increase, let's say, just based off of historical precedent, how much have they increased? You know, we've got, you know, some new houses building in, so you get that. But otherwise, a lot of it is just in there, rate increases. On the expense side, you know, and in the budget, the detail, we have, like the way we present the budgets, we have the summary pages where you start. We start with like, here's how it gets advertised in accordance with statute. Here's the summary view by fund to say, you know, current year, prior year budget, prior year actual, second prior budget, I think. And then we have the line item line as well. So anything that we can, we will, you know, note to the side and say, here's the assumption. Any of our payable expenses, those are just kind of baked in from the payroll schedule that we go through, because we do itemize that basically by position to say, here's the raise, here's the bike, retirement expense and everything else. And that kind of directly populates those. Everything else on the expense side is really a combination of, you know, prior year historical, if it's fixed items such as electricity expense, you know, probably a similar multiplier there to say, hey, here's a 5% index or something like that to try to project it out. You know, some items come from, you know, the department heads in terms of, hey, you know, what do we need in police, public works or otherwise? So it's really a combination of all of those things that really kind of help build out that estimate. But again, you know, I think it's important to acknowledge that, you know, nothing is moved after unless it goes to the commission, which again, in four years, there's been two budget amendments in total that have gone to the commission. Nothing else has been moved from any account to any other account. You know, as Jim said, that would not even be permitted. It's really just a matter of saying, hey, here was our guess, you know, 15 months ago, where did we end up the year? And then let's take that into account for the next year to say, hey, you know, we are over on this line, under on this, and, you know, continue that effort to really right-size all those line items, basically on our, you know, the combination of past history, current year expectations and anything else to make the best guess possible of what those costs were.
Let me ask you this, how flexible are you in terms of what the government might do? Like Tallahassee is talking about a $25,000 increase in to your tax exemption. And taking in the fact that we have a great majority of our income comes from property tax. So if a $25,000 hit were to be to apply to my tax exemption, so that's $25,000 I get taxed less for, and in that matrix, it will show less money coming for us. How nimble is the question? Are you in terms of keeping abreast of policies without being a slave to it? But just as, they got algorithms that can do just about anything. What would it look like if we were hit with a $25,000 homestead exemption increase?
Yes, on the homestead, and actually I'll tie into the third part of my list. Say, here's, you know, a few things that we will be talking about in the coming months. That was one of them. You know, we're looking somewhere in the $120,000 ballpark to say, hey, apples to apples if everything else was the same. So same old rate, same tax rule, if we were to redo last year with that impact of the homestead increasing, it would be about a direct $120,000 reduction of property tax revenues. And there are, you know, just from the being in tune to what's out there, the state is also contemplating changes to FRS, specifically looking at putting in an increased cost of living adjustment for those receiving benefits. What we've seen in recent years, again, we calculate the retirement projection or budget to say, here's the current rate. The state changes those effective July 1st. So we know for nine months, this will be our contribution rate. And then we assume, hey, it might go up a half a percent, two a percent. Currently, our regular class FRS employees are 13 and change percent contribution rate. Five years ago, that was, I want to say, maybe 9%. So we've seen increases, we factor that in. But what the state's looking at there is the additional benefits from, you know, what numbers I've seen out there could be up to around a 4% increase in those contribution rates, round figures, which is about a third, a quarter to a third of our retirement expense. So even if payroll was flat, you know, we could be looking at an increase in our FRS expense of 33% just from that change from the state. So there's plenty of moving pieces out there that, you know, we're nimble to in terms of being aware of them. You know, we're kind of, you know, comes to dealing with it is, you know, the homestead would be going forward. But what would happen is say that was implemented effective today, we're going to see that in our reduced property values. That's going, that would then impact our mileage determination, you know, in the upcoming budget cycle to say, hey, property values, because of this additional exemption, even though values went up 10%, the taxable portion of values may be, you know, decreased by a couple percent or only increased. That's where we would really kind of deal with that to say, hey, values went up, but we're not, that's not carrying over to the taxable unless we increase the mileage effectively to kind of offset that.
One last question. You were our auditor for four years before you became our, we had an in-house general financial person. And your shop has taken that position. And I remember on the board when you sold it to us, was that we would have the access to a whole department as opposed to an individual. Looking back now, five years before you were the auditor, five years since you've been our accountant, have you seen the benefit of having been done your way? I know you're selling it, but just out of, you know, apples to apples, do you see what we are doing now as being beneficial in the future? Or have you seen some things that maybe we could do a little bit differently?
In terms of, in general or our?
In general, as you being our general, because we don't have someone here day to day. And your shop is the overall shop. We may not get to see you all the time. But in terms of how we are moving day to day, we now have a new city administrator. And just like what happens with those names, I think we have what they call fresh eyes when you're looking at it. Our eyes are old, we've been looking at it, we've been living at you for five years. So if there's some way that we can see something different that could be to the benefit of the city, that's where I'm getting at. Is there, that might be a hard question to ask, but you're in a position, you're unique in the sense that you've been on both sides of this. So where we are right now, you think you guys are still the best deal?
Yeah, so what I want to say is, I mean, I do think it's gone well and all the years. You know, it has been a learning kind of process in terms of making that shift. You know, five years ago, this was kind of the first go-round. A couple of years ago, we amended the scope to kind of, not to change the scope, but to reflect how it had evolved. Because in that contract, we tried to get as granular as we could, if you recall, where there was two or three pages of the city will do this, James Moore team will do that. And, you know, five years ago, it was kind of a guess. So, well, here's what we think and how it would all fit together. So that's evolved. There's been some things that's been, hey, the city actually can own that pretty easily. Some things that say, hey, if we own this as part of the James Moore team, and even the way that's evolved, you know, there's really a team of probably about four to five dedicated individuals in terms of, you know, the same individuals helping with the bank reconciliations and different processes, the budget, the audit preparation to get everything to the auditors. Where at first it was kind of me as a supplement, now we've really evolved to say, hey, it's the whole team. So you kind of get the, you know, you need a 5% finance director, 20% of an accounting manager, 15% of a staff accountant to really kind of fit all of those different needs, you know, in the best capacity that makes sense in terms of, you know, costs and otherwise. So I feel that's not well where I would kind of go in terms of just, you know, perspective, you know, and how we feel about it. We've got now five governments that were, you know, four are very similar capacities. One is kind of a hybrid, where it's more we just kind of come in to clean things up at the end of the year versus being a part of the team. But we actually, in all honesty, are working to kind of grow that model at James Moore, because there's been a major decrease in just the number of qualified finance and accounting people coming out of schools and come on the Stetson University County Advisory Board and see the accounting enrollment numbers scare me, to say that where are we going to find our people in the future? So it's kind of one that we've seen, you know, I think five years ago, it would have been hard enough to find a full-time position with all the credentials needed and desire. You know, that's really kind of continued the shift where we've seen it as a major hole for local governments across the state, you know, probably about this size and smaller, where it just, you know, doesn't work. And there's not enough people out there to say, hey, let's everybody go, you know, find their own dedicated full-time finance director. So we've actually, you know, the last six months, really kind of focusing into saying, how do we standardize everything and really build out a very repeatable model? Because again, I think we already have seen the need in other clients that, you know, struggle to kind of get their audit done and they're having issues, which is really how this came about five years ago, is, you know, we had gone through a painful audit and then the final audit before we switched, you know, it dragged out, you know, it was painstaking in terms of the issues that we were kind of, you know, coming in to help correct. But then as the auditor, you've got to remain independent, so you can't get too involved in, you know, helping correct things. So, you know, we kind of are seeing more and more of that in general in government, where this model, you know, to me is kind of one that says, you know, this in some ways is going to be the future, similar to the city attorney model, I feel like, where that's been a long-term thing in terms of saying, hey, to get that expertise, how do you bring that in when it's not one that's going to be this full-time, dedicated individual for every single city?
Thank you. Ray?
I have another question. This, I think I'm still on the same line with you here with what you were just discussing, with how you practice and how you partner with a city like Allen and your other clients. I read the letter that was sent out to management. Are you familiar with that letter?
The one from the auditor, about four pages long. Yes, I mean, I don't have a copy, but we issue them on all of our audits. I probably almost know it from the beginning.
Okay. As I read it, I mean, everything looks fine, you know. It would be nice to know if we can get a heads up on some items earlier than, you know, the last minute. Like you said, we've got four months, we can start all over with the budget.
There's one thing that I found interesting in that letter, where it's under the header of significant risk identified. And your company has identified the following significant risks. There's two. One is the city's management could override internal controls. Would you like to explain that?
Yeah, sure. So that letter is from the auditor, McDermott Davis. She will be presenting it at the 6 o'clock. Maybe just to kind of clarify, so that is not, because we are in part of management for purposes of the auditor. With regard to that paragraph, there was actually an update to the audit standards that showed up for the first time in this letter last year. So as an auditor, so now perhaps speaking of, this is what the auditor does. The auditors are required to, in following audit standards, you have to take what's called a risk-based approach. Everything changed about 20 years ago after the Enron debacle. There were lots of enhancements to the audit standards talking about risk. So for 20 or so years, auditors, when we do an audit and when we, you know, if you looked at our audit work papers five years ago, auditors have to assess significant and fraud risks to say, what is a risk area that you're going to consider as part of the audit? It's not, here's an issue you've identified, let's drill in. It's just what are the inherent risk areas to this entity? So last year, those risk areas, instead of just being part of the proprietary audit work papers, those risk areas now have to be communicated to those charged government. So that's why the auditor basically says, hey, we've considered these risk areas. And there's two risk areas that are required to be documented and assessed in any audit, or it's basically a non-conforming engagement, you did not follow audit standards. So the two required risks are management override. And I'm assuming the second one there is improper revenue recognition due to fraud. Is your second required risk that auditors must assess?
Yeah, the second one I've got is revenue could be recognized in a period it was not earned.
Yeah, so that's effectively an improper judgment recognition.
So this is from the auditor. Are you guys keeping an eye on these kinds of things? Because obviously, we're feeding you information, then you're putting it into a system that then is being fed to an auditor, I guess?
Yes.
Are you keeping an eye on these kinds of issues as we ride along through the year?
Yeah, so revenue, we were, you know, in some ways, probably the outside of the utility billing function, you know, which we look at that, you know, we're the ones actually booking a lot of the revenue activity. We do these bank reconciliations every month. We reconcile back to, here's the payments from the state, here's any other deposits that were made, and look at the coding, you know, in terms of when staff went to the bank and said, here's $100, what kind of revenue did they code it at? So we're looking at that. The proper period relates to cutoff in terms of, let's say, it's sales tax revenues. We get those two months in arrears. So when we get our November payment of sales tax dollars from the state, that actually relates to September and the prior fiscal year, because basically, you went to the store, spent money in September. In October, the vendor remitted it to the state. And then in November, the state remits it to the city. So that's kind of what that's focused on is saying, hey, is there a proper cutoff that we've got everything in the proper fiscal year?
Okay, so do you see that this could present a problem to us? Number one, I mean, it's kind of high level to me, the city management could override internal audits. Do we get details on that? How, why, when, something like that? If it could, you know, if it's happened already? It does say there are risks identified. So it appears that there's something there, but I just don't know what the there is there for right now.
Yeah, so again, it's really that those risk areas are identified because audit standards require that those be identified as a risk. So what happens then from the auditor and their perspective is the auditor has to say, there is a risk of management override internal controls. Again, no matter what entity, you have to acknowledge that risk. Then what the auditor has to do is the auditor has to document how they have addressed that risk in their testing. And of course, if the auditor comes across any issues to say, hey, in our testing related to management override, you came across the fact that you're, you know, you denied a process over bank reconciliations or payroll or otherwise, or that there was an override to say that, hey, we looked at this and, you know, this was supposed to be approved by this person, approved by the commission, let's say. And it was, oh, well, no, this was only approved, you know, by the administrator. And that came up as part of testing, addressing that risk. That would effectively then show up as an audit comment in some sort. The risk is just saying the auditor considered what could go wrong in these two areas and documented, performed testing to address those risks to their satisfaction.
Okay, so I'm taking it that we will get some detail on these two items in some form, other than it's just a significant risk identified?
There is no detail. And this is just saying, this is what the auditor considered as part of the audit. So it's basically saying, as part of looking at the audit, they perform procedures that say, we're comfortable there were no issues effectively in these two areas.
I haven't seen monies in a while, but when we, usually we get our audit report, our comments would be highlighted. Is that the word that they use to highlight the sorts of things that need to be addressed? Is that the word that they use to highlight those sorts of things that need to be addressed? And then if it didn't get addressed, the next year would highlight it again. But by it being addressed or being identified or found in an audit, our accounting would be somewhat on alert that we need to not to continue to do these certain things? That audit, that audit comment?
Correct, yes. So I mean, when there, there's different levels of audit comments and findings. And for instance, in the last year that we did the audit, you know, as I mentioned, it was a painful process. We have, say, either six, seven or eight comments, I believe, off the top of my head in terms of different levels of identified, either it's a material weakness, significant deficiency or other reputation, kind of different levels of severity. So I know we had some comments that were at that top level. You know, recently, so in this audit report, as we have to do, there's no comments in the current in terms of, it basically it's a clean report with regard to any compliance issues or other.
And that's a good thing when we don't have comments, the things that the auditor picked up and said, they'll need to correct this or deal with this. And if we don't have them, then at least we're within the, what's that word that they use, GAP?
Gap?
Anyone else? We've been a 10 minutes though, if there's anything else.
Just to clarify, so in terms of the, it sounded like we had a consensus with a kind of sample that shows on a monthly basis, here's what was spent in the month, year-to-date, how is that year-to-date compared to the budget? That was something that we all felt comfortable. Just make sure we have a clear direction on that. And we'll, again, it's already there, so that would be no issue to get that included on the March agenda, basically it's having the commission pack at one place.
So when can we expect possibly giving a variance report that's similar to this?
Yes, that's where.
Motion for this?
No, I think that's what you were just saying right before March.
Yeah, I was saying, well, that's no problem to build out and have that in the pack for March and monthly thereafter.
But my question is, it will be similar to this format if not identical?
That's what we're asking. You all wanted to see a sample of what I gave out.
Okay. Make sure.
So that's, that's a yes?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Do we need a motion? Okay, make a motion. Yeah, we're here then.
That's fine. So we just, no, we got the question. That's the essence of what you're looking for. So you've got a monthly report starting March from here on out. That will show where we're at year-to-date, the month and where we're at in the year.
I just want to make notice that our attorney is early for the next meeting. He's here now, Scott. Is there anything more? Anyone? Anyone? I make a motion that we, no, a motion. I think we just adjourn at least 10 minutes before the next meeting at seven o'clock. And we will continue under the same legislative allegiance and the same opening and closing.